I guess the new judges.
No.
Okay. Being that it is one o'clock, we are going to call the regular business meeting for the Clickatuck County Board of County Commissioners to order. Let the record show, all three commissioners are present, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, we approve the business agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second to approve the business agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes for March 22nd, 2022, slot of 22s, as presented.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we are going to move into citizen comments. Citizens will be given three minutes to give your comment to the board. At 1:25, the board may or may not respond to comments. And what we will do is, at 1:30, I assume many of you here are for the public meeting on the redistricting plan. That is a public meeting that has been directed to us by the judge, Superior Court Judge, and that is an internal meeting amongst the commissioners. So what we will be doing is, we are not going to open public comment on that because it is a public meeting directed by the judge. With that said, each one of you are a member of the public, and each one of you can have your three minutes to give a public comment. But that will not be part of the record for what goes over to the judge. We already had the public comment, or public hearing, back in December. But we, of course, I've received almost 20 emails, and I've read them all. And we will be, we will be discussing at 1:30, and staff. So with that, I will start with public comments in the room, as always. I will say, there are a lot of people online, and a lot of people in the room. If you sent me an email, I've received it and read it, just so you know. So you don't have to reread the whole thing if there are other people likely who have not had a chance to provide public comments. With that, I will open it up in the room. Was there anybody who would like to provide public comments?
I just have a question. You said, sent you an email. Is that to the board, or to you personally?
That was B O C C got forward to all of us. And if it came to my email address, I read it as well. Okay? Any public comment? Come forward, give us your name and location. Yep, nope.
Send the mics.
We've got 40 something people, almost 50 people online.
Are they green down there, by the way? They're green?
Okay. And I will start. Go ahead and start.
Commissioners, my name is John Nakai, and I'm one of the five Trout Lake voters who petitioned the Superior Court to amend your 2021 districting plan. And by now, as you mentioned, you've read many of the comments, and you'll probably hear more today about why you should amend your plan to put Trout Lake into a single district. And I'd just like to say that I'm extremely disappointed with the process that you gave us. And the more I looked into it and discovered how completely unnecessary and irresponsible it was to have crammed the whole process into the last three weeks of December, the more disappointed I became. And to top it off, you blame the entire situation on circumstances that were not entirely true. And Commissioner Soder, at that time, you stated that, you know, the public can basically appeal the process if you felt that the mark was missed on this. And if you read the public letters, and the comments, and our court briefs, listen to the judge's comments, and you'd realize that you indeed missed the mark by quite a lot. So my question for you, for later on today, is, you know, what are you going to do about it? Are you just going to take this opportunity to reaffirm the status quo? Try to justify a process that remains arbitrary and capricious, violated the law, and disrespected the constituents of Trout Lake?
Sounds like that.
I hope not. Commissioner Soder and Anderson, I voted for both of you guys in these past elections, and I view you as people of integrity and public service. And I know you have pending deadlines, but I ask you to think and act outside the box. There are ample reasons and justifications for you to amend the plan. You know that no other voters in the county will complain if this change is limited to just the Trout Lake area. So I request that you stop contesting our lawsuit and allow the judge to amend the plan back to you so that you can change it for the better. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will go online. And Vern, is that Vern Harpool that is there? Hi, Vern.
Hi, how are you all today?
Great. I'm starting your three minutes. What do you got?
Got it. My name is Vern Harpool. I live in Lyle, and I'm here representing the Lyle Community Council, giving you guys an update on the Sandbar Access Committee. Commissioner Soder was at our most recent meeting with the Forest Service, and I'm hoping that this little comment period will give him some opportunity to talk to you further about his ideas on what happened at the most recent meeting. But it was on March 26th. It was with Donna Mickley and her staff from Hood River. It went on for about an hour and a half. It was cordial. And what we found out is that the Forest Service is indeed meeting with this troublesome area independently with the railroad, with the Confederated Tribes, fisheries, with the Highway Department, maybe the Corps of Engineers, a bunch of different people. And she kind of gave us updates on what each of them said, but pretty much denied us the ability to meet all together. It was left with, maybe we should get a facilitator. She wanted us to give them some specific requests of how we see the project going through to kind of focus on what kind of environmental assessment might need to be done. So all in all, it was, we're continuing to move the needle slightly with all of the various giants that we're dealing with. So in the next week or two, Commissioner Soder is part of our group. We're going to put together what we can do for the area this summer, kind of as a community. And we'll come back as a formal agenda item, I think, to let the county know what we're going to do. But it basically involves putting up signs, trying to get railroad crossing peoples, help the sheriff with the parking, just to show community activism that we're involved with this area. And then that we're also going to present a document showing that there is historical easement across those tracks. And there's precedent that we should can go the easy way that's always been maintained. We're being naive, but we continue to take on the Goliath, and I think we're moving them forward. Again, this is just some comments to hopefully stir Commissioner Soder to be able to talk to you guys about this further. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Vern. Okay, next, we will go back in the room. Dave Barta, please come forward.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to wish you a good afternoon. You know, one of the bad habits my kids picked up from me was driving old cars that are near the end of their use life. And one of my kids one time said, you know, Dad, my pickup's got an oil leak. Actually, it was Marty's old spray pickup, by the way. He goes, my pickup has an oil leak. And he said, you think if I keep driving it, the leak will go away? And I said, you know, stuff don't fix itself, son. And so I guess I'm coming today to visit a little bit and transfer that thought to the process that we've dealt with and talked about for at least 18 months, maybe 20 months regarding the E O Z and potential solar guidelines, solar policies, excuse me, and solar ordinances. And I think it leaks some, and it needs some work. And I think everybody agrees with that to some degree. I think there are zoning issues that, that there are some things that could not be permitted under conditional use in the area that a lot of industrial solar is looking at. And yet, it looks like we, we could be in a position of converting over 8,000 acres.
... associated with that expansion of that project, so.
We could be looking at over 8,000 acres of solar panels in a proximity of Goldendale, where most of the growth of Goldendale hasn't actually happened in the city proper. It's happened in a, oh, I'd say a ring that goes five miles from the center of Goldendale out. There are a lot more people concerned about than you've heard from. And so there's the, other groups are in the formative stage right now. But I just want to encourage you to consider, to continue to consider changes that might be made, that could be palatable to all sides if possible. I'm glad to see that you're addressing it to some degree on Thursday. I have no idea what you are going to speak about at your work session, but I appreciate the fact that you're bringing it up and talking about that policy. And I would encourage you to consider some form of interim controls. I know what the time is on the clock. I'm familiar with what's going on in the permitting world and with the planning department. But if there's any form of interim controls that you can put on that will help us iron out some of these rough spots, it would be great. I've heard it said that litigation's expected, and I personally think litigation is a failure. Maybe my one person, maybe my many people. I think that we have the tools potentially to, to find ways to work a system out that could work for everybody. And I'd encourage you to keep looking at that. A long time ago, a guy named Hal Moore was a, he was a infantry battalion leader in the first air cabin Vietnam. And he had something that he taught his men. He said, three strikes and you are not out. There's always one more thing you can do. And I would encourage you, as you consider however the policy implementation is, or what needs to be done with the E O Z or anything else, to consider that there is always one more thing that can be done. I will leave a map with you and an article for your peruse later. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Barta. Next, we will go back online. Star six to unmute yourself. Turn your video on. Raise your hand. If your video's already on, the first one to raise their hand goes first. Joanna Turner.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I just want to speak real quick in support of redistricting and recombining Trout Lake. Trout Lake is a community of interest because we have common policy concerns and would benefit from being represented in a single district. I would like to give three examples of harm that have occurred as a result of this split. Elections, whether primaries or general, are about representation. Primary elections for commissioners are held at the district's level only. So only residents of that commissioned district can participate. This system exists for a reason. Residents have a civic responsibility to seek out, support, and vote for candidates that best represent their community's interests. It ensures that each district is represented with direct input from its constituents. When a community is divided, their voting power is diluted and voters are disenfranchised. In this case, part of our community participates in a primary election in a district where their needs are not necessarily mutual nor aligned. This is about fair representation. Second, confusion is never a good thing when it comes to elections. Our commissioned districts do not coincide with the Trout Lake School District. There is and has been considerable confusion for the past 10 years surrounding elections, ballots, and who gets to vote for what. These questions come up repeatedly during various election cycles. Neighbors get different ballots from each other, creating confusion. There have been instances where members of the same family have received different ballots because of a divide separating their property into two districts. Confusion can lead to election mistrust. That's something none of us wants. And my final example deals with outreach and participation. When a commissioner participates in a community meeting, they learn about and advocate for the needs of our community. They meet with us to consider issues such as zoning growth or emergency services. Should a second elected commissioner also attend such a community meeting, their participation, or perhaps even their presence complicates things by creating a quorum. Once two commissioners participate, forming a quorum, the meeting is no longer a community-driven event. A single community with two representatives is not a good thing. And what if two out of three of the commissioners were both from Trout Lake, one from each district? Thank you for considering the points. I urge you to consider reuniting Trout Lake into one district. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. We will go back in the room. Come forward, give us your name and where you live, if you wouldn't mind. Please come forward so everyone online can hear you.
My name is Mary Callahan. I live in Trout Lake. I did send an email to the board last night stating how I felt about my right to vote and how it was affected. What I have today is, I would like to ask a question of you, and that is, the fact that Trout Lake is considered, is located within a single geographical valley was not even considered. As I understand it, under R C W 29A point seven six, four E, that the geographical bound, the natural geographical boundaries must be considered. That was not done. I would like that looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, back online. Somebody want to raise their hand? Steph, please give us your name and where you're located in three minutes.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Irving. I live in Trout Lake, Washington, and just want to make a statement about this. We're a community of, with a strong record of supporting both our schools and our fire districts because we believe in working together. As a longtime member of Trout Lake community who owns land in both districts, I encourage you to put all of Trout Lake into a single commissioner district. You have received reasonable alternatives to do this, but please do the right thing and put Trout Lake back together again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We will go back in the room. Anybody else interested in providing public comment? Please come forward. Give us your name and where you're from.
Thank you. My name's Linda Rowland, and I live at 73 Dean Road in Trout Lake. And I too sent an email in yesterday, so I'm thanking you for having read that ahead of time. This morning, I received an email from Kira Fogarty, who's a teacher at our school. And she said, if there was an opportunity to read her note, would I do so? So if that's okay, I'll read Kira's note. "When asked to describe Trout Lake, I often explain that we are the last stop on the highway before you hit the mountain. We are, in many ways, isolated from the surrounding areas because of distance and geology. We are very community-oriented, and now we are divided in the way that we vote. The difference in population, should we be rejoined, is not enough to exceed the 10% variance. But for the members of our community that are forced to vote in District Two, the difference is much greater. We live in a community that discusses ballots and the effects of voting, but when they cannot vote on issues or candidates that may impact them, they are shut out of that process. Furthermore, if they can vote on issues and candidates that affect Glenwood, but are not involved there to understand the community concerns of specific issues, then why should they be voting in that district, or voting there in that district? The decision to split Trout Lake's districts feels arbitrary and unhelpful. Our community should have a consolidated voice and not one that has the potential either to be split or overpowering as it would be if our community member was elected to the District Two position. The district lines should be reviewed, and a more sensible line that doesn't split our community and reflects common voting needs should be chosen. Thank you, Kira Fogarty."
Thank you, ma'am.
And if I have 30 seconds left, I'll just put a pitch in for the White Salmon Watershed as being a considered natural and recognized boundary. I think I sent you a little map yesterday in my email, but I'll just put my second pitch in for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, online. Raise your hand. Unmute your phone. Star six. Sheri.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I would like to discuss the proposal that is in front of the public hearing scheduled for next week at 1:30 on the 26th regarding the CEPA appeal process. And reading through the flow chart of the changes that will be in front of you and in front of the citizens next week for a public hearing, is Clickatuck County Code 20.28.030. It's a flow chart. I have a lot of questions about it and how this is going to affect all of Clickatuck County going forward, especially as the county, the county will be moving into redoing your comprehensive plan, and you will be rezoning different areas.
Ms. Baske, I'm pausing your time real quick. Because that is something that was going to be a public hearing, and you have information that the rest of the public does not have, I would kindly ask that you hold off on this until the public hearing, because that will be going in front of the board for a public hearing next week. Would you mind?
Sure. Go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you. With that said, if there's anything else you'd like to speak on, I still have over two minutes remaining.
Absolutely. And with what you have just said, that the rest of the public does not have access to this information, I will not discuss the information exactly. What my opinion is now, is why doesn't the public have this information? This is very concerning. This will change big processes. This will affect how conditional use permits are being handled in the future and how CEPA appeals are handled. And so I am requesting at this point, since you have just admitted that the public does not have information, that will greatly impact all Clickatuck County citizens moving forward with conditional use permits being used against citing maybe inappropriate projects. That you hold some sort of informational meeting before you have a public hearing, which nobody knows anything about. These are big issues that will affect everybody in our county negatively. If the county chooses to use this, and you have made power in this new write-up, that will be used against the citizens, where all we will have is litigation. And I stand behind Trout Lake. They should be one community. They are one community. This is ridiculous not to have them one community and one voice. And the commissioners, you need to do your jobs. We have elected you to represent our voices. And according to all these things that the public doesn't have information to, that I have information to, you will now be removing yourself in administrative appeal decisions, passing on your duties to represent our voices to hearings examiners, to people who don't represent us, bypassing our local committees. So I am asking that you put this hearing on hold, this public hearing on hold, until you have informed the citizens correctly on the plans, on the processes you are making, because it is not fair to make your constituents, your people, take you to court and litigate against our own county like you have done to us with Under Canvas. You will do it with rezoning. It is not fair to make us only have litigation against our county using our money as you use our tax money.
Ms. Baske, your three minutes are up.
Put this on hold till you can inform people.
Thank you very much for your comment.
May I provide some clarification?
You may, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Baske did ask for information ahead of time from the Commissioner's office, and I believe, planning. She was advised that the board did not have any information, and it would be posted on the 21st of April with the packet for the 26th hearing. I believe that Public Works may have provided the public planning, may have provided her some additional information. The information is available to everyone. I believe a lot of that information the Planning Department has posted on their website. So nothing's been withheld. Everything's above board.
Do you want to wait until 25?
No.
Oh, go ahead then.
And this Commissioner Christopher, I would like to clarify that Ms. Baske received these documents before I even received these documents, because they're not set in stone. It's a proposal that's coming before the board in a public hearing, when we'll have time to discuss it, and the public will have time to discuss it. So putting the cart before the horse is a complete what's going on here. And to have a presentation to the public before we even have a presentation to the public, doesn't quite make any sense to me. But I'll just stop there before I...
All right. We have time for one more, since we took up a little bit of time. Is there anybody who would like to provide public comment in the room? Please come forward. And I will say, since you're the last one, if you sent the email, please just verify that you've sent us an email.
Yes. Hi, I'm Kathy Keller Jones. My husband Barry and I live on 107 Little Mountain Road in Trout Lake. So I did send, I sent this letter yesterday as an email. I just wanted to say, I guess I didn't hear anyone else, what this feels like, you know, to be, like, I think of it kind of on the wrong side of the street. I mean, that's how, we are very close to downtown Trout Lake, well, if you're a good walker. But, and yet, everybody on our side of the street is, has been separated from the main part of Trout Lake. And it does have an impact, even though I realize that nobody designed it this way purposely, you know, but that's the way it feels. When you live there, it feels sort of, you know, like you're being disrespected, or you're not really part of. And so I would really encourage you, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to hear some of these other comments, and reconsider potentially how you split up the districts. But I do, I wish that we could reunite the representative voting power of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I will open it up to my seatmates. If you have anything you would like to respond to from today, we had a varied discussion.
I'll go.
Please, go ahead.
To the Trout Lake people, through your letters and whatnot, I would say it was informative because to me, in this last week's worth of emails, there was new information on there. There was different arguments than the arguments of the past. Some of those arguments aligned with my arguments. So it was good to see that, and I won't get into more of that. We'll get into that in five minutes or more. Mr. Barta, yes, I did bring up the comp plan for Thursday's agenda, because I'm tired of waiting on starting it. We've got to find a way to start it. The plan was to have a long-range planner. We put that money aside. It didn't get spent last year. It's not being spent this year. Why we can't start it with a consultant or somebody until we can have a planner, I hope we get to that answer on Thursday. Now, understanding that it is my understanding that any permit that's already on file falls under the old regulations and not any new regulations we make, doesn't necessarily change much in the near future, but hopefully it can give the citizens a better input on what they want in their communities moving forward. And that might be able to address this issue five years from now, so it doesn't happen again. And that's what I'm trying to get to with that. I already talked, so I'll give you the rest of my time.
Commissioner Soder. All right. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for being so involved in your community. Thank you all for all being voters and caring. Guess my time is up, too. And thank you all for those that are online. Having went through an election and been elected, and spent time, you know, campaigning in the Trout Lake Valley, yes, the majority of Trout Lake is in Commissioner District One currently and has been for the last 10 years. And yes, most of Trout Lake Valley is my constituents from technically that district. But what I can tell you is, is that as soon as we are elected, we are not, I am not the commissioner from District One. My job is to represent all of the constituents of the county, no matter where they're at. And I go to meetings in Clickatuck, and in Goldendale, and everywhere else. And because that's what matters. We're not here to pick sides, like, I'm from District One, I'm trying to get all the money down there. That is not how anybody that I've ever known that sat on this commission has ever thought of the world. Just because that's where we're required to be from does not mean that's only who we represent. We represent everyone. And I will hold the rest of my comments for the rest, but I hope you all understand. I respect all of your emails, everything that you have said. I truly do. And it is my goal to represent each and every one of you, whether you're from the west side of the river or the you're from the west side of the river or the east side of the river, and that can be many different rivers in the county. Okay, being 1:30, we are going to close public comment. I am very sorry, 7211. Please call back next week if you'd like to provide public comment, but we do have a public meeting. We have to begin. All right. And you're all welcome to stay, and I'm guessing most of you will. Okay, we are going to move to 1:30, public meeting for the review of the 2021 Clickittat County redistricting plan for the purpose of giving adequate consideration pursuant to RCW 29A.76.1014E. To the extent feasible, and if not inconsistent, with the basic enabling legislation for the municipal corporation, also known as the county, the district boundaries shall coincide with the existing recognized natural boundaries and shall, to the extent possible, preserve existing communities of related mutual interest. Auditor's office, would you like to come forward?
Hi.
Would you like me to start, or would you like to start?
Go for it.
It's clear that the record didn't show that we had a lot of discussions about 4E and the natural boundaries. I was hoping that you would give us some of your guys' because I assume that you had plenty of internal discussion. And could you please give us some of your overview of the internal discussion that you guys had with regards to the communities of mutual interest and the boundaries and maybe even enough background of how we kind of got there in the first place with regards to precincts and everything else?
So Brady, you've got your notes and that. Do you mind?
Okay.
So I mean, I can go, but you'd have to backfill.
So in 2011, when we did redistricting and did the review for the adjustment of the commissioner districts, we tried to make as little impact as possible. That being said, we looked at the census numbers. So they give us the census blocks, and we needed to adjust the commissioner districts by a certain amount to make them as equal as practicable. And we chose different areas of the county. There was some areas by Centerville that were adjusted, Pine Forest that were adjusted, Wishram, and Trout Lake. And there was 182 voters, I believe, that were affected in Trout Lake with the change of the boundary. None of the precincts can be split by commissioner district, so that's why adjustments were needed in those precincts in order for the commissioner boundary line to be changed. We just tried to make the smallest adjustment we could, because entire precincts, being changed from one commissioner district to another, would make too big of a variance in the number of citizens in each of the commissioner districts. So that's why the adjustment was needed. So we took some from District One into District Two and some from District Two into District Three.
And that being said, for this year, the difference was very minimal. And so we were well within the 10%. If we would have made, we did talk about other areas of the county on the west side, and no matter how we looked at it during our discussions in my office at your desk, some community was going to be divided, because the west end has grown so much.
Can I talk?
Yes, absolutely.
So if we had made more adjustments, the potential was to take more of the Trout Lake area into District Two, which may have affected that area even more than it did by keeping it the way it is now.
It could have caused more division.
Yeah.
A larger division. So, I mean, we went down, we looked at Houston, we looked at, you know, White Salmon Benjen area. No matter what we tried, when we're looking at the census blocks, we couldn't come up with something that, that was feasible in our minds.
Yeah. It would impact any community greatly when we moved the boundary line.
Can you talk about creating the boundary line? Because it looks to me like you're using the river and the road, correct? And you use that as the, as that boundary, because that gives you easy meets and bounds?
Yes. Yes. It wasn't necessarily targeting the, the community there. It was just, we took the bare minimum of the census blocks to be incorporated into District Two that we could.
And that was in 2011.
And, yep.
And I believe two choices were given to the board at that time, and this is the one that was chosen.
Yeah.
Questions?
I have a quick one.
Yes.
I wasn't here, but when this 183 voters from Trout Lake got put in Glenwood, I'm assuming they got pulled out of the Trout Lake precinct and put into the Glenwood precinct?
Yes. Yes.
So, so just to be very clear, you can't split a precinct, your, the lines have to go by the precincts?
Yes. An entire precinct has to be in a commissioner district. So you can't take a line through the precinct. It has to be all within one county commissioner district.
That's what I thought as well. But I just wanted to have that on the record.
Yeah.
Yeah. And first, I think we need to be clear when, I want to make sure we're, when you're talking about Glenwood, we're not the, we're talking about commissioner districts, not necessarily.
Yeah, Commissioner District Two.
District Two. So when they were moved from, in 2011, from District One into District Two.
Yes.
That's really what we're talking about. I don't know if you want to have general conversation now. If, I don't really have a, I mean, questions may come to me.
Yeah.
I have a statement whenever you're ready for it.
I'd like any other further questions, and I'm still not going to let them go, because even during discussion, I'm sure we're...
I'm sure we will have, I'm sure we'll have questions.
Go ahead, statement.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I want to say that I've done a lot of thinking, thinking on this issue, trying to look at it from every side, every avenue and every possibility, and from every voter's perspective. We have a few communities in this county split by commissioner district. It's not just Trout Lake. The people in Centerville, my home, between Horseshoe Bend Road and the little Clickittat River are in District Two, when the rest of Centerville is in District Three. If you ask these people, they would say they are part of Centerville community, yet they are represented by Mr. Sauter. The people in Goldendale, living right down Columbus Road right here, are in District Two, and the rest of the Goldendale community is in District Three. People living by the fairgrounds by Knight Road who consider themselves part of Goldendale, not part of Glenwood or Clickittat or Lyle or anywhere else, are part of District Two, not District Three. So they would consider themselves part of Goldendale as well. I would argue that the people in the southwest corner of the Mountain Brooks precinct would say that they're a part of White Salmon community, but they're in District Two, where White Salmon is in, is in One. We have about a dozen residents in District Three from Prosser, and that community isn't even in our county. Then you have this Trout Lake community split that we are talking about today. So this Trout Lake community split is nothing different, in my opinion, than we have elsewhere. So as you can see by these few example splits happen, we also have splits that use waterways as boundaries. Heck, our county and our state is split by waterways and boundaries. So that argument holds no merit with me. I could never for the life of me figured out how the Trout Lake community split could disenfranchise a voter or cause ill will in any way, as the only thing this district boundary represents is commissioner district races. And after all, that person that usually wins the District One primary loses in the countywide general election anyway. Boundaries haven't mattered in commissioner race results, the general election results. Also, no one in these other areas of community split that I've mentioned above seem to be complaining, because it's a countywide general election vote for the commissioner seats. I have heard a lot of testimony from people in Trout Lake that really don't care about this issue at all, and then some from a small group that does care. So that gets me thinking as to why. I look at the votes cast in the Trout Lake precinct in the last District One commissioner race, and it's a pretty much a tie. The Democrats had 310 votes and the Republicans had 298. So over 600 votes cast, and the difference was 12, meeting no strong political advantage either way. There isn't a demographic difference, nothing. No one has been able to articulate to me one example of a commissioner district split hurting anyone or disenfranchising anyone's ideology when it comes to a commissioner race, because after all, that is the sole purpose of this boundary, is a commissioner district race, and the results are on a countywide election. I was only able to see this as a win for the Trout Lake community, because you guys have the potential to have two commissioners in your city or your town. In the amount of boost that could give to a community is absolutely huge. I look at it up here, if, if, when Mr. Sauter retires and a commissioner from this little area I talked about over here happened to run and win, you don't think Goldendale will be getting its way? Heck, yeah, it'd be getting its way. So that would be a big boost for this community, just like it would be a big boost for your Trout Lake community if you had two. So that's what I was always looking at. And after, in the end, it always comes down to the general election anyway, so I haven't really seen the potential to disenfranchise a voter. Then I got into thinking about my campaign and what political strategies were used against me. And then bingo, I thought about what about the primaries, which you guys are now discussing. Where only in district votes count. If someone, if a Trout Lake resident from the Trout Lake precinct ran in District One, and that race had three people on the ballot, the Trout Lake person could be disenfranchised, because their entire community of Trout Lake wouldn't be able to rally in support for them in the primary election. Being that it's a top-two move on, that Trout Lake person might not be able to make it past the primary for the sole purpose of community split by commissioner district boundaries, and them not being to rely on the votes of their entire community. And then what if a Trout Lake resident from the little 180-person Glenwood side decided to run for office, but they could only rely on the 180 votes from their side of Trout Lake to get them past a primary in District Two? Or maybe somebody from the 180 side of Glenwood precinct of Trout Lake decided not to even run for Commissioner Two, because they can only rely on the 120 votes from their community to support them in the primary election. Then it got me thinking about political strategy. A candidate could weaponize this community split as political strategy, knowing the entire Trout Lake community couldn't rally behind his or her opponent. Thus, someone from the outside of Trout Lake can convince a third party to put their name in the hat or on the ballot with no intention of campaigning, just to try to knock them out of their, knock their main Trout Lake competitor out of a three-person primary race involving community split. Now, I personally can't find evidence of a three-person race in District One or Two that involved Trout Lake, but it could happen. And I have to think that if it could happen, that someday that it will happen. And that harm could disenfranchise a voter. And that, my friend, changes my way of thinking on this issue altogether. Now, I'm not in the business of splitting voter precincts, and honestly, we don't have time. If we did that, it would take us well past candidate filing day, and that absolutely would never convince me that that would not disenfranchise political candidates from running for this next election cycle. But we can move the entire Trout Lake precinct into District Two, uniting all of Trout Lake into one commissioner district. This would allow the entire Trout Lake community to vote for the same commissioner race and remove any possibility of potential voter disenfranchement, disenfranchisement that I mentioned above altogether. Also, as District One is the fastest growing, this potential moving of the Trout Lake precinct to the District Two would allow for more District One growth in the next decade and would also keep us under the 10% differential set by the redistricting guidelines. So for the record, my opinion recommendation at this time on this issue is to move the entire Trout Lake precinct into District Two and unite all of the Trout Lake community.
Commissioner Sauter.
Okay, couple logistical questions. Thank, thank you for your, your...
Blindside, yep.
No, not necessarily. That's, and that is just more evidence that contrary what people may think, we do not have discussions outside of an open public meeting with each other, because we can't. And so this is not, this is not unusual when we don't know where each other are on issues, because we, this is, you hear it when I hear it.
I was afraid it would be a blindside.
So a couple, couple questions with that. Where is the boundary as far as, so if, if the board considered, you know, revisiting the district boundaries and we were going to contemplate what Commissioner Christopher had said, moving the Trout Lake precinct, the precinct into District Two in its entirety, where is that precinct boundary as far as on the southern border? And does it follow some natural boundary, road boundary? I'm assuming it does.
She's looking.
And while you're, while you're doing that, I would reiterate, I would, I would, your, your beginning comments about communities being divided, we, you know, lines get drawn somewhere. They have to get drawn somewhere. There, we have, you mentioned several places in the county. Because one thing, I think we need to be clear, we're actually looking at the redistricting plan. A lot of folks are super focused and have a lot of interest in Trout Lake, but we're actually, have been asked to revisit, to take comments, thank you. Although I have that, I need the, the precincts, not the, I have that.
That is the precinct line.
What's the precinct line?
Right there.
Should be on the, yeah.
That's the bottom of Trout Lake.
Oh, that, that line right there is the precinct line.
That's what I was looking for on my phone.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, as I was saying, we're actually, you know, we are looking at the plan as a whole. And we do, as you had said, we have, you gave examples of many places. I, I will say, since you're, we're being nice and candid and honest up here with your blindside, is that I don't, it makes me uncomfortable to have such a detailed discussion about the politics of the line, because that's not a consideration. I tried to look at the criteria that is laid out in the RCW, which is about, you know, it is, you know, we want to follow some reasonable line as far as it makes sense, so people know which side of the line they're on, a natural feature, a road, something. We want to get that population balanced as close as we can, and we don't want to divide communities as much as is feasible to do. So those are the three criteria that I was looking at. I will tell you, I did not give any consideration to, as far as potential scenarios. I know that, that issue was raised in 2011 about that there was some political benefit to the way that the redistricting was done in 2011. And I, in fact, we, we purposefully asked to not have any voter election data included with the, the plan, so that there could not even be a hint that we were trying to gerrymander or move things around. And I am not naive enough to think that does not happen in places. I think we all would, would expect that. But I can say, in 2011, which this, you know, the 2021 plan is the status quo of the 2011 plan, there was no consideration given to that whatsoever about any kind of scenario as you laid out. And it does, it's, you know, you're, you obviously have given a lot of thought, and that's, that's your business. But it does make me uncomfortable. Okay, I'm going to stop there for now.
I would, if I can add one more. I will go on to say that I don't believe that the redistricting commission in 2011 did anything wrong or improper, thinking or in a gerrymandering type of a way. That's not how I look at it, and it's not how I looked at it a week ago, until I started thinking about candidates that could potentially run in primaries and be disenfranchised that way. So that, that's my only political... So that, that's my only political point of emphasis because like I said, the precinct is pretty much a split.
So back to my earlier question, if I may, Madam Auditor, Elections Administrator, from a logistical standpoint, so filing week in 2022 is May?
Sixteenth through twentieth.
May sixteenth through the twentieth.
But you can file on, by mail, May second.
Yep. We're going to start receiving them by mail only between May second and the fifteenth. Well, through the end of the twentieth, but the sixteenth at nine AM, we can start receiving them in person and online. Closes at four o'clock on the twentieth online and five o'clock in person.
I generally know when that is, but it's not, it's not a date of interest to me now. So beyond my current role.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yes, I think you do.
I'm kind of there too, but my job involves it.
Yes, yes. So from a, from a, from a practical standpoint, so if the board was going to contemplate changing the redistricting plan, what are the timeframes as far as, could that be accomplished before May sixteenth?
Not really.
You'd have to do it before May second.
Before May second. Well, yeah, if you're opening.
Yeah.
Other than people can do it by mail. The only issue, well, no, me, if, if you were.
Because if you change the boundary, then the county commissioner has, if somebody filed for county commissioner, they'd have to know that they live in the right district.
Or P U D.
Well, P U D is set.
It is set.
Yeah, they did theirs based on our 2021 plan.
Theirs is different, right.
All right.
Okay.
Nope.
Another factor would also be asking for a judge. You would require a volunteer.
Right.
Don't have time to advertise. But that whole process, I believe.
I would encourage anything that the board might consider for a change to wait until after certification of the general. And I believe, I don't know, the law does have a provision for not more than someone, I can't remember what it says.
Every four years, I think, for Commissioner District lines. I don't know what the legal part of that is.
Let me talk about true disenfranchisement. True disenfranchisement, because this is the sheer district, these two seats. True disenfranchisement, in my mind, occurs if you live somewhere and you don't have the opportunity to run for a race. For example, right now, if we were to move the boundary line, and which would mean changing the precinct up to include all the White Salmon River Valley, anyone who lives on the east side of Trout Lake and north of the road would have been disenfranchised from running for election in District One in 2020. And now they would be disenfranchised from running for county commissioner in District Two because we could be moving that line and they would not have the opportunity. To me, that is true disenfranchisement. That's something I could not, because there might be somebody up there who would love to sit up here and.
Excuse me, Jake, I can barely hear you.
Thank you. I am so sorry, that's why I never turn it off. Hopefully, in essence, what I said is true disenfranchisement is when somebody cannot run for the seat. And if we move the boundary line and we change the precincts, which is difficult to do because they need to be equal and in value, to the east to include District One, everything within the White Salmon River watershed, that would be disenfranchising someone this election. If we were to move the district boundary to Camp Five and include all of Trout Lake in District Two, which according to the numbers and how the census is going, because I did, I didn't talk about it a lot, but I did look into those numbers, in the future, that will happen at some point. There's just no way with the growth of the west side and the rate it's going, unless it shuts off today, that sooner or later, all of Trout Lake will not be in District Two. And then at the same time, we will be making District Two on the east side, whether it's Wishram or the area north of one forty-two getting smaller because the east, District Three is just not growing at the same pace. And I did look at this. And at the time, I felt that the, our, our only option in essence, if we had tried to in December to do this, is we're only going to split Trout Lake more. And that, like, like you were saying, was the, the worst option in my mind. I ran the numbers and I came up with close to the same numbers that the appellants had put forward in terms of doing it. And when I look at the rules and the regulations, the goal is to have it as close as possible to as closely keep the groups together. Now, if we just move the district boundary to Camp Five, that will take the numbers between District One and District Two and skew them further. And that, to me, honestly, I don't care because I just don't want someone disenfranchised and running because I look at it as I run for the entire county. You get through the primary and it's the entire county. I really don't care in that, in that estimate because everyone still has a voice and everyone has a vote. And I never thought about the political shenanigans and games that, that people can play. But again, that's the same in Goldendale, that's the same in Centerville, that's the same in all these other areas where we split communities. When we look at district maps, like at the state level, you have cities right through the center of it, right through the center of the city, and that's over a much larger perspective. It's because that's how you have to do it in order to keep the numbers correct. And in that, I don't see any way that we can go through the entire process before May second. The only option I see is, is that the, the judge can rule that we did not rule arbitrary and capriciously because we did think about these things. You thought about these things, we didn't talk about it on the record because we weren't making any changes and we didn't create a good enough record when it comes down to it. But I hope he sees that we did think about it and, and we have contemplated all of these different options where we're not trying to ruin a community or anything else. My only goal is to not disenfranchise somebody who wants to run for the election this year. So if the judge is going to make a ruling, I would, I would say that the only thing to me that would make sense is either to uphold what we currently have where, because in essence, part of the precinct, the Glenwood precinct, because there's not enough people there, had to pull over some of Trout Lake. And that's what you had to do in order to make the numbers work. That happens all the time. We either follow that and we respect that, that you guys did a good job, you set the numbers, or the judge could say, I have heard what the appellants have said and I agree the way that it's been done is not fair. And if we look to the future, that, that we would put all of it in District Two so that no potential candidate can be disenfranchised. And I don't even know if the judge can do that. That's the thing. I don't even know if the judge can do that. But those are the only two things that I see that, that can come out of this that can be fair and equitable, both to the community, to the county, and to anyone who potentially runs. I do not think that, that you made any decisions that were arbitrary and capricious. I think that you take your jobs very seriously. I think that you are always put in situations where you have to make the decision on the lines, whether it's, you know, horseshoe bend road or the little Clickatatt River or whatever you're doing. You're doing it to the best of your ability, knowing that we're never going to make perfect and we're never going to make everyone happy. And, and I respect everything that you have done, as well as in 2011 when you were involved with it, making these hard decisions. So I'll get off my soapbox for the moment. Thoughts from my seatmates or from staff or other electeds?
I will just say for the record, I do not believe that the current redistricting plan is arbitrary or capricious. And I would, it's not optimal, it is not, but that is the standard as far as the, you know, I believe we did consider, at least I, I know I did, I considered all the different options that we could potentially do. Do I think that the process was perfect in as far as its timing? It's not, and I will say that's on us. It is on us and it's not, it was not on you. I mean, ultimately, as far as, I want to be clear about that, I don't want any misunderstanding, is that ultimately, the redistricting plan is the Commissioner's plan. It is not the Auditor's, it's not the Election Staff, it's us. And, you know, could we have, you know, should we have been, you know, more diligent about the, the calendar? Absolute, I mean, this was a weird, twenty-one was a year, you know, between the, the, you know, COVID, the delays in getting the information was, I mean, it wa, it was a very unusual. That's not a, I guess I'm trying to make it an excuse, but it's not a very good excuse. And so I, I will say I am disappointed that we did not have as much time as would have been, what I would have liked. But that does not mean we did not consider, at least I, I feel like we considered the information that we had and we did the best we could with what we had. And I would leave it to the judge to make that, ultimately, I will obviously defer, the judge will have the final say. And if the judge, you know, refers it back to us, then we'll, we'll, we'll deal with it and we will do that and we'll do the best we can, given what the judge gives us. But, and I do, I understand the community's perception that they are somehow divided. I don't, as being one of the Commissioners and, you know, serving, you know, kind of on both sides of that line before, it's unfortunate, we have not done a good job of making you feel like you're not divided. Because as Commissioner Anderson said, we don't, those district lines, those are about primaries, that's all they're about. It has nothing to do with how we govern and I think it would be, it, it, it would make me sad if that is, if that becomes the norm and it really is about what district you're from. Because we, we just have not had a history of doing that, that we, you know, I've, I've always served on boards that, and I still do, that board members feel like they represent everybody, the whole county's interest. We serve in other, like, as Jake said, you know, he goes to meetings in Clickatatt, I go to meetings in Bickleton, I go, you know, Dan goes different places. It's not about, you know, we all field calls and emails from folks from all over, it doesn't really matter to us. But I know there's a perception of that and I, that, that makes me sad because that means we're not doing a good job. Because I don't, I don't think that's an irrational perception. It's, you know, we've made some mistakes somewhere that folks feel like that. And as I said, we'll, we'll see what the judge thinks and, and at this point, that's where I'm headed.
I just want to echo what Dave was saying there. People think that they have one Commissioner because that's where they live. And I agree with them, it makes me sad that you think your Commissioner is District One and District Two. I'm right here.
You actually have three.
I fight for you just as much as I want. The people need to know that, that, how do they have all of us? And if we were, this board or previous board has made the community not feel that way, it's really a shame. And hopefully, we can be better next time.
Yeah, there's, there is the other part that, you know, we even fall into it ourselves. I'm the district, I'm the west side Commissioner, so people naturally want to call me because I'm their neighbor. But, you know, usually when you're calling me, it's about something that you care about. And what that thing that you care about might be not my specialty because I don't serve on that board, Dave might serve on that board, whether, like, I serve on the airport board, it's in District Two. We, we really, we're, we're more about the topics and the specialties rather than where we're from. But again, I'm always going to call the person that's down the road if, if I know him and I have a rapport with him. Kind of like, we don't do a good enough job, the people of Goldendale don't know me as well as they know Dan and the people on the west side don't know Dan as well as they know me. Sorry, Commissioner Christopher. In terms of what the judge actually was asking for, that, that we recognize the natural boundaries. In order to speak to that, I, I think that that is an important thing that we do need to speak to and that is, is that waterways, roads have always been used as natural boundaries. And you, when you went through back in 2011, the way you designed this was based on the natural boundaries, I can see it on the map. And, and so a hundred people from one community or a hundred and thirty-eight got put into another community of like interests. We are, both communities are farming communities, homogeneous in many ways, they may be rivals in school, but this isn't a school district boundary line. But for the most part, I think the communities, especially Glenwood and Trout Lake, are, are in essence, one group, one community. They are both just as community oriented as the other. They're, they, they, they are involved in each other's sports. Some people from Glenwood go to school in Trout Lake. I mean, it is, it is truly a very magical and special place around the mountain. And, and I don't want anyone to feel disenfranchised. I had it happen many times during my campaign where my friends, very close friends in Snowden are like, why are you not on the election? Did you, did something happen? Why, why didn't I not get a vote for you? So this is natural, this is, this occurs everywhere. And, and I feel that, you know, the, the judge needs to make his ruling and as long as, as he chooses to not disenfranchise any of the voters from potentially running for this year, the District Two County Commissioner, I would absolutely respect his decision, whatever it is. And I would say that I respect your ladies' efforts and hard work when it comes to a horrible year, as Commissioner Soder said, with a horrible timing with the census and everything else. And I know how busy you are and I just wanted to thank you for everything that you do.
Thanks.
And again, as always, the buck stops here.
Yeah. We have great election staff. That's, you know, my, my crew is great.
Okay.
I'm in the middle of it with you, but yeah.
I know Prosecutor Canal is online. Is he, would Prosecutor Canal have anything to add, anything he would like to say? I'm guessing.
Not at all.
All right. Okay. With that, I guess in finalizing it, I feel that the district boundaries did coincide with the recognized natural boundaries that were done and created according to the precinct, not the districts, but the precincts, to the extent possible, as well as preserved the existing communities of related interest. I truly feel that way. Anything from my seatmates? With that, we are going to close this public meeting and I would thank everyone for being involved. Thank you for caring about your community. Thank you for voting, of course, that's what this is all about, is voting. And, and thank you for making the drive and spending the time to be online. We do hear you. Thank you. And you're always welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting as well. With that, we are going to move on a little late to the Code Compliance Department update. Lim Pratt, Clem, come on forward, give us some good news to go with the bad news.
Say, hopefully the bad news wasn't because I told him to get closer to the mic.
You're not supposed to talk about those things in public session.
I was telling him to get closer to the mic.
Okay. I only heard it once.
Check test one, two, three.
Yeah, we got you.
So I didn't, I wasn't fully prepared when I was looking at preparing my notes and you got. And you got my, my update. I'd like to express my appreciation to Clickatatt County Board of Commissioners for their confidence in me and as the co-compliance officer for the county. As you know, I have a number of decades of law enforcement with varied experience and special assignments in local, state, federal level, and the work here has been enjoyable, frustrating at times, and a very learning experience, I interjected very, because it has been. My wife and I have family in Texas, and more of them are, are moving there. We spent long hours contemplating this and have decided to also relocate there. If that means I've been poached by my family, so be it. I do, I do not have an exact date for this, we're looking possibly early, as early as late June. And I'll make sure that, you know, there is advance notice before I do that.
And that brings up something for us, should we look at hiring and a little bit of transitional, or do we throw him in where he got thrown in and had to learn everything on his own
First, that's, I'm disappointed, but I understand, as soon as you started, I thought, uh-oh, maybe, and maybe you all had advance notice.
We read it in the email this morning.
Oh, no, I, I haven't read my emails yet, so, I said, ooh, that sounds like a...
Do not give my, you know, like, okay.
No, it's been, it's been a busy morning, yes. No, so, I understand that. As far as the overlap, yeah, I would be supportive of, if, if it's even possible to...
You can go when you find a good replacement.
Or the answer is no, and you get three thumbs down.
We do not accept.
You were, yes.
Verbal, yeah, that was a lot of restraint there.
You were the unicorn that I don't think we will replace. I, I, I don't, I don't think we can replace your experience or your
Temperament.
temperament or your negotiating skills, and, and that is such a critical thing for that department, and I don't think we're going to replace it, so how dare you, sir?
I, you know, I used to track poachers, that was one of my assignments. It, it has been a arduous decision, going back and forth, when first got the announcement from them, I don't know, probably four or five months ago, that my grandson was moving to Texas and taking his parents with him, he's only three, so, we thought that, well, there'll be some long trips and whatnot, and as reality starts setting in, and discussions with other family members, that, knew that we needed to make the move as well.
Family first.
I don't blame you one bit. Family is everything, and that is verbal for me to start the process, so that we can find someone that can hold a candle to your flame, like, it's likely not going to happen. But, with that said though, in the next two months, you know, my goal, and I think our goal, was to start working on updating that code, and I saw you as the right guy to try to get that. So as far as we can get in
Get that done before you leave.
Drop everything else, handle that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, he's, he's made it all the way through it, as you, if you read it, he's just
He's pretty much ready for it.
Yeah, he's pretty much, he's eliminated the backlog, and now it's time to look at that code update, so that whoever does follow you can be successful. And if we can focus on that, that would, that would go a long ways, and I know you're not going to get done with it, but if we could get a good jump on it with your knowledge, and hopefully the person that comes in has their own viewpoints on it, that we can, we can make a good, a good swing at it at least.
And so you've got that relationship with the prosecutor that I don't know that the next person is definitely not going to walk in with that relationship, so I'd like to get as much of that done as possible.
Well, I've listened to prosecutors since 1985, so, it, it, it's kind of a natural thing with me, but, yeah. And if anybody wants my plot in Centerville Cemetery, I I, I had, I had planned on us actually being here, this, this was our retirement home that we, we built, we, and
We don't call those retirement homes where I'm from.
Yeah, well, no, I meant on down the road in the
Oh, okay, all right. I have a better plan than that.
I thought I, I thought I could manage a meeting a little better than this, I think I'm going to need to go to the training.
On the case management status, there were seven cases that were closed since the last update. And three solid waste cases were successfully closed, some notes on that, letters have been sent, and meetings were conducted prior to the change in the solid waste procedure referring to Title 8.14, which the information from the prosecutor's office, and I had discussed that last update. So follow-up on those cases showed that there was compliance on those. Two sewer cases were successfully closed. On one case, there was never a hookup, and nobody had lived in the mobile home. The complaints that were received in regards to the sewer never addressed the mobile home placement permit. Therefore, according to policy, I cannot investigate that, and so that, that case has been, been closed. Storage fence was erected in one case, and this was a case that had been stemming from 2019, and that case actually was just recently closed, two days ago.
What is a storage fence?
It, it's a privacy fence for, yeah, so in this case, it's, it's in a rural center area, so, and, yeah, so that, that's been an ongoing, but it was just finished up a couple of days ago, so. There was one 2013 building code case that was closed, a letter of occupancy was issued by the building department, and a letter of non-compliance was removed. And mainly was the building department that, that did the legwork on, on that case. Moving now to item number two, one co-complaints, compliance case for wrecking yard zoning violation has been reopened. In December of 2020, I received a letter of dissolution from the property owner, for the property owner's business, which he had received from the State of Washington of revenue. While passing by the property last month, it appeared business was still being conducted. Also, I received a call from Department of Ecology regarding this property, they had received a complaint about possible soil contamination, contaminants. They will be conducting a, contacting, excuse me, the property owner to resolve this issue. Item number three, between three and, or, excuse me, six and eight phone calls are received per week on co-compliance related questions. There are currently seven active nuisance cases, which have been converted from Title 8.14 solid waste cases, and six active code violation cases, most of those are building permit or issues. In those cases, right now, those six, the permits have been extended, but it's been an ongoing issue with a lot of those, those cases. So I've noted that the, you know, the expiration dates in the files, and then, once that happens, then a, conferring with building department, and then sending out a letter to the property owner about compliance issues. Building Department has been real good at keeping up on those, though, so. There are still 15 suspended code cases due to permit expirations, and a couple of them, building permits and onsite sewer, that's the OSS. Those, those cases, some of them are just kind of in limbo, with, some of them do have letters of non-compliance, and so, they're entered in as non-compliance, and in the earlier case I mentioned, when that compliance does happen, then the building department will remove that letter. One case was suspended altogether when it was converted to a nuisance case due to only having one complaint. So a nuisance complaint, you have to have two complaints from two separate independent property owners. And because it's, it's originally was a code violation complaint, there was only one complaintant, the case was opened up and investigated, now that has been converted because of the Title 8.14 issue, it's been converted over to nuisance, and then the investigation's been suspended, pending a second complaint. And that's per the Clickatatt County Procedure Manual for Co-Compliance, Article 2, Section 3, who may file a complaint.
Questions? Are you actually going to retire this time? Are you going to go down there and fix somebody else's code complaint?
That's a good question. My wife has got some honeydew things, I think. She, she did convey that she thought that law enforcement probably not to go back into.
Just so you know, that was rhetorical, I actually did not ask that question for an answer.
City of Texas or countryside of Texas?
Countryside, so it'll be
Don't tell me, I'm just good enough.
No, it's okay, it's, it'll be the southwest area of Fort Worth. Yeah.
You sure you want all of that humidity?
Heard they get tornadoes there too, and they got rattlesnakes.
What can you think about?
We have this place, you know, you, you go, and they have these machines that land, and you get on them, and, you know, four hours later, you're there.
Right, but I get it with a wife and a small grandchild, it's going to cost you a fortune flying once a month. So I, I understand where you're at a thing move we'd move to.
We would like to thank you for all the time that you've invested in Clickatatt County, for everything you've done for the citizens of Clickatatt County, and we look forward to having you until your last day, and then we'll be calling you after that.
Well, we, we, we love this community, we love Centerville. When I came here in 2012, with state parks, we didn't know it existed. And, so it's, it's bittersweet. We love our church.
Thank you again, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Carmen, you want to come give us some good news? Because so far today, it's just been a
How are you guys?
Great.
We're awesome, can't you tell?
Me too. It's Tuesday.
Tell us about National Corrections Officer, Employee Depreciation Week.
Well, sometimes I'm sure they feel depreciated.
It's almost accurate.
Some of the situations they've been in. Because of the pandemic, we weren't able to celebrate the Corrections Officer Week the past two years, so I felt it necessary to get back into that groove. So National Corrections Officer Week is going to be May, is May 1st through the 7th of this year. My husband and I are going to put on a big smoked meat barbecue for the corrections officer on, I believe, it'll be that Thursday of that week, I don't know the date exactly. You guys are more than welcome to come, we're going to just celebrate the hard work that our correction staff put in on a daily basis. I do have to let you know that I made a conditional offer to a gentleman yesterday to fill my last position. On that note, I will have one also, I know is going to be leaving, so, it will be short-lived that I'll be fully staffed.
So you're saying, you're, you're throwing a party on Cinco de Mayo?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. And we'll hold it down in the back lot, because we don't have really any other place to, that way the people who are working can come down.
Down in the solid part area down there?
Yep, like we did before, so.
You know, is it noon time, what time?
I'm estimating probably about 3:00 till 6:00 or 7:00, that way I can get day shift and night shift all taken care of, so.
All right.
Yeah, I just got to go over to buy meat now, and hopefully it's on sale. Takes a lot of meat to feed these guys. I did submit a proclamation. I was really proud of myself, I even put it on pretty paper.
I'm assuming that's up here in one of our files?
It is, it's somewhere. I have an amazing staff, and we are very blessed in the jail to have these guys.
It's on what?
I got it, I got it, I got it.
All right. Well, I would be proud to read this if you would let me.
I would, thank you.
National Corrections Officer Week, May 1st through 7th, 2022. Whereas correctional officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to maintaining safe correctional facilities and ensuring the public safety, and, whereas correctional officers are responsible for the custody, care, and rehabilitation of hundreds of offenders every year, as well as the maintenance of safe and secure facilities, and, whereas correctional officers are resourceful, capable, committed, patient, and persistent professionals in criminal justice and in our nation, and, whereas correctional officers each train, mentor, counsel, offer hope, and a new focus with reentry and life outside corrections, and, whereas office, corrections officers rise to meet any challenge and serve this honorable profession nobly and admirably, and, whereas each corrections officer has exhibited honor and dedication, courage, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Clickatatt County Board of Commissioners proclaim the week of May 1st through 7th, 2022 Corrections Officer Week in Clickatatt County, in honor of the men and women who deserve recognition for their service and should be commended by the leaders in their profession, the public and elected officials for their tremendous job they do, and exceptional performance of duties under the most difficult of circumstances. Dated this day, April 19th, 2022.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
That's where I was looking.
So seconded.
There's been a motion and a second to proclaim National Corrections Officer Week, May 1st through 7th, 2022, in Clickatatt County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
You made it a better way.
Sounds like you're going to declare it cholesterol week with your food thing out there, so.
Well, I had to buy, I had to buy my husband a third smoker, so I think we have three now.
Just so he can do this, right?
No, no, it's just
Thought you were going to say a third stint, but that's okay.
Actually, no.
Everybody wonders why we don't open a
Yes.
All right, you got any other updates for us? Good news, only good news.
Actually, I've been working with comprehensive, we are starting our psychiatric program within the next couple of weeks in the jail, so I'll have a psychiatric medication provider, and we'll be doing, have a psychiatrist available once a week by a doctor on a stick, and that's going to be a huge change for us. We've never had a mental health prescriber for medications, or any kind of weekly mental health help available.
So how many hours a week is it?
Right now, we're targeting eight hours, most. The funding comes through a different grant than our CJTA funds, so, we're working on finalizing everything with that.
All right.
It's pretty exciting.
That's good news.
Yes, it is good news.
Every little bit's good news.
Yeah. Yeah, we're making good progress, we'll get there.
Thank you, Chief Deputy Carmen.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on. Can anybody want to do this consent?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda with all 17 items.
I'll second the
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda with seventeen items, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, uh, pay estimates, pay approvals, what you got?
Lay down there.
Think they're in there.
Jake's not looking, he just gave up.
Nope, they are here.
Sorry, I was listening.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, fifty-one cents, uh, for the date ending April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to pay the bills, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay.
Lots of staff in the room for some reason.
All right, well, we asked a few over here.
Oh, that's right, you had board pending.
Okay.
And Mr. Sodder, I'm just reminding you at a meeting at three.
Yes.
Okay. Just giving you a reminder.
No, that's good.
Okay, uh, board pending, do either you gentlemen have anything?
I did until one thirty. Not right now.
Okay, you have any? Um.
That's why you gotta write it. I can't keep notes.
Oh, you kinda can. Uh, I did have a question for Mr. Sodder, is he going to the WASC Legislative Steering Committee Retreat?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I did pop onto the meeting yesterday and mentioned that, uh, our PILT thing, so. And they had a big long debate over dams and it was quite interesting.
A big debate over what?
They got into a debate over removal of the Snake River Dams, which is not the place nor the time for such a discussion on a controversial topic. But it it was kind of interesting that it chewed off as much time as it did. But no, I was just curious about that one.
I've got something, but do you guys mind if we take a five minute real quick?
Nope.
All right, I'll be right back. Let the, somebody make a motion?
We'll talk while you're gone. Oh, I had more too, so we'll wait for him.
Oh, or it's it's really good.
Oh, that's not what he said? Okay.
It's just the AI now.
Yeah.
It's just making stuff up.
Let's get back to it. Um, I had something for the, quit looking at that.
We had our our regular, um, airport board meeting today. And one of the big issues that's been around for the last ten years is the water right agreement between the airport and, uh, actually technically the agreements between the county, the city and the water district. And, um, we've come across issues throughout that amount of time. Jonathan Kara, the, um, uh, city attorney, um, that's not, that works for the city, that's not employed by the city, um, felt that it would be best if, in order to get this done, we hire a outside law firm um, that specializes in this, uh, these deals between the FAA and the revenue distribution or the 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 FAA's rules on, uh, revenue. And so there's like one guy in the country and it's not cheap and it's five hundred dollars an hour for his time. And there, you, we know the city's gonna come to this county and say, you guys wanna pony pony a path. Or, I don't know, however long it's been, the city's always provided the legal services and we don't pay our fair share. I know that Julie had sent an email to Commissioner Sodder at the time, inquiring if we would be willing and interested in sharing in the costs or if we would like to take on that, um, those duties. And then on top of that, there's also another cost and that is, in order to get through this revenue program, uh, we need to have an accurate appraisal of the value of that water. And, um, so this, the attorney has been in contact with Aspect Consulting with Dan Haller cause he's probably the best at it. And that's gonna cost between five and seven thousand dollars likely. I wanted to talk to the board about what we want to do. The airport board felt that, um, the best probably decision that we could do for our interests is to have a meeting between the county commissioners, the city and the water district to talk about this agreement that was entered into so long ago that not everybody understands or agrees to in terms of what the exact process was gonna be and who was gonna own it and get the STCs and how that would look in the future. And so I wanted to bring that to your guys' attention and have a discussion on what direction, if you all would be interested in sitting down with, uh, the water district and trying to hash and hammer something out.
Um, yes, as far as to that, I'm always in favor of the party just getting together and get it, just get this settled. I, I'm a little, um, I guess concerned cause one of the issues that came up before as far as with outside legal counsel were, yes, the, um, city manager did, um, contact us, contact me back before, um, about legal counsel, but the the issue was going to be, I don't know that, like, we're two different entities and it's, the airport isn't an act, the airport board is not an actual entity. And that was the issue before was that who's actually contracting? Like, we can't, like, we have our own legal counsel, they have their legal coun, the city has theirs, we have ours. The air, we never really could settle on, can the airport board even?
So this is the city, Jonathan has been authorized by the city council to spend up to thirty thousand dollars on this. But you know they're gonna come back to us and ask for half.
Right, but who's his client?
Well, this, I guess the city and the county, you know?
I don't think that, I'm, again, I'm, I'm speculating, but that was the conflict before is we couldn't figure, because again, attorneys can only represent their entity.
They're half of the airport.
Right.
Right, and that's why, like, in the litigation we had with the, the county had its attorney and the city had their attorney. Because generally, you know, our our interests are aligned and they should be, but, um, so that that would be my only, um, that would be my caution is how do we how do we do that? Because then, if we agree, I mean, I I would say, yeah, in the interest of fairness, if there that, you know, we're getting legal work done to support the airport, then, um, we should be paying our fair share, but the the rub is that that attorney is not, that, I'm assuming that attorney can't actually represent our interest, they're representing the city's interest and so there's kind of an inherent conflict there that they're, so I I don't know.
Legal opinion, but, you know, same idea, I guess theoretically, you can always do a tit for tat and they buy the lawyer and you bought something else. Uh, but could they represent your side is the good question.
Yeah, I. And the reason they have provided the legal counsel as far as the city attorney did it was because they're the fiscal agent for the airport. And they have, and yes, they have offered before, hey, we've we've done it, it's, we'll switch now and you do it. And we've said, no, no, thank you. It's, I don't know, I don't know that the airport agreement, I mean, it it is, has to be mutually, like, uh, they could say, no, we're not doing it anymore and we have to figure it out. So I don't want to see that because they they've been doing it, they do all the budgeting, they do a good job. They do all the AP and everything is through, um, is through their their system. We just make our contribution per the the agreement. And then, of course, any, any capital, it's, we have to, we have to fund fifty fifty, but.
No, I don't, I don't know much of what's going on down there, so I will prefer.
So my thought was, if we have this meeting with, uh, the water district, I would really appreciate if you were there and we can advertise the meetings, cause you were there when that agreement.
Right.
I would like to go just to learn.
Well, can we have, well, I I think, I mean, we've done it a couple of times where we've had joint meetings between the city council and the board of commissioners. And, uh, we could certainly do it, because the water district's gonna be in the same boat, they're a public entity. So they're, it's a public meeting and there's no reason we couldn't do a joint, um, meeting between all the entities and have have the dis, cause that's the easiest ways to get everybody, what's that? We, we did it up here, I believe we've always, we're kind of cranky that way, but we could travel, we could go down there.
I just didn't know, so.
We host, we hosted the last one, so we took on the work.
I think it would be a good idea, um, we need, we need to come up with, you know, options A, B, and C, and if we want to play hardball or however we want to, you know, different ideas to get through the end of this, but, uh, my thought was, is, you know, maybe hold off on paying this, uh, high-priced attorney for right now. Um, but we do need to figure out the value of the asset, because if the value of the asset is way up here and, you know, when we did the exchange, it was worth seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars or whatever for all that, you know, that's how we said that there were, we were gonna change the asset.
Right.
But if Dan comes back and says the value's up here and we only got this much money, the FAA is never gonna go for that. Cause the FAA is, was always the last linchpin and it has to be equal value. You know, you can't gift away that that asset or exchange for less than the value.
Although, just, just for the record, the FAA invested zero dollars in the, in the water system.
They have invested a lot of money in the airport.
They have, they have, you have millions and millions of dollars.
Millions and millions of dollars, so that definitely gives them a little bit of a seat. And they don't want to see, uh, a board or airport board or the county divest of an asset for pennies on the dollar as well. That could be used on the airport over time, so I I understand where they're coming from. And they have their umpteen rules and regulations that they have to deal with. So I guess the one question though was, the Dan Haller, uh, the city is gonna ask for, because that's professional services,
Right.
is gonna ask for our share of that, and if so, where are we gonna pull that from? Is that something Dave might have an economic development, because this is economic development that ties in with, you know, what we're doing over there?
The the board can't hire an attorney.
No, he's not a, um, he's, he's a consultant, as far as, not an attorney, he's a water, he's a water resources. He worked for the, consultant, so he's not a, he's not a lawyer, has no legal background at all. Cause no, we couldn't, they couldn't. But they can hire a consult, the airport can and has.
That goes back to the question that if the city hires that water rights attorney, before we can pay any part of that, we would have to take that through the prosecutor's office, right? Because we can't hire an attorney and I'm not saying they're representing.
If they're representing the interests of the county, they would have to be deputized by me and I would have to consent to the, not only the retention, but the expenditure of funds.
Right.
Right, right, if they're representing us, but if they're representing strictly the city, then we couldn't pay anything for it, correct? No.
No, certainly not, no.
Okay. Oh, that's an easy way to say no to paying.
But as to the, the water rights, uh, Aspect Consulting, we we contract with them all the time.
Right. So it's two forty-seven, sir?
Yeah, I know, I gotta.
Um, two quick questions, I had, uh, Department of National Resources application for the Trout Lake National Area Preserve Land Acquisition Grant, letter of whatever, and the Columbia Land Trust letter. We have issues with those or no?
I'm okay.
Okay.
You have any issues? Oh, then, I think we're good there.
Okay.
Uh, did we make a decision on the Dan Haller paying our half and finding a way and talking to see what you have available or we'll have to find it somewhere?
The five to seven thousand dollars for the cost estimate on water value, uh, that, is that a split amount or is that just?
Uh, five to seven is total, our half, or our, we'd be half.
I believe I have that in my question.
Okay, okay. And then if we do schedule a public meeting, uh, with all the, uh, above-mentioned groups, would Prosecutor Canal, would you like to attend as well?
Depending on availability.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, um, so that kind of gives us a little bit of direction there, um, anything else on board pending? Uh, Prosecutor Canal, do you have anything for elected official report update?
No.
Nothing at all? Okay, um, anything else for the good of the order from either of my teammates? Let me go back through my list and make sure I didn't write anything else down. I don't have anything.
I would entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting till nine oh five AM on Thursday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two for scheduled workshops. Note, the public is welcome to attend workshops, uh, but they are not recorded and Zoom is not available. Oh, and I will also note that on Friday, April twenty-second, at noon, the commissioners will be attending a special luncheon at the Pioneer Center Senior Services Dinner Room in White Salmon in recognition of Clickatack County Senior Services Volunteers in honor of National Volunteers Recognition Week, which is April seventeenth through the twenty-third.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, we will see everyone Thursday, April twenty-first, as well as, uh, Friday, April twenty-second. Thank you and have a great day.
Aye.
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 We're also on the radio on Thursday.
Yes. Good luck.